Bring the meeting back to order and we are going to start with Paul. And we are going to review 2016-603.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Very good. This is appeal number 2016-603. Tuvani Viatuvala, Can I Help You? Is appealing the denial of medical cannabis cultivation registration by the planning director. This is actually located out in the same area. We're gonna have a lot of similarities. I'll try and get through this as quick as I can. That's site, right there. It's 347.12 acres. It's located at 10779 Walker Trail Road, Copperopolis, approximately one mile northeast where Walker Trail and Hogan Dam Road intersect. It's located on sections of 20, located on, in portions of sections 22 and 23 of Township Three North, range 11 east of the Mount Diablo base in Meridian. And again, probably the most direct way to get out there is from Copperopolis, Rock Creek Road, Salt Springs Valley Road, up to Hunt Road, do the switch, go out Hogan Dam Road and up Walker Trail. That'll get you there. This, we've discussed before, the appellant actually has three parcels out there. Did sign a lease with AK Builders on May 6th of 2016 for one acre on each of those parcels to cultivate on. After that, coming up to the beginning of this year, on January 1st, she signed a lease with the landowner, giving her complete control over our project site, which is this one right here. We're on the site now. This is parcel 41. This is 2016-603. So, the beginning of the year, she has complete control of what's going on on that piece of land. The appellant made an application to the building department on June 28th of 2016 for 2,200 square feet of mixed light cultivation on that parcel. With that application came the letters from Barnett Environmental. Both letters were dated June 27th, 2016. One came to the planning department, one went to the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. And in those, Bennett Environmental explains that his, he is the representative for Can I Help You? That's his client. And Can I Help You has 13 cultivation sites spread across all three of these parcels. And Bennett estimates the combined cultivation area to be 104 to 156,000 square feet of cultivation area. Mr. Barnett explains that the 13 cultivation sites were going to be consolidated into cultivation areas of 22,000 square feet each, one for each of the three parcels. On our parcel, that is going to become cultivation area number four. And right here, it is called current site four, proposed. That's the yellow one. Explained that on each parcel, one existing cultivation area was designated to become a single consolidated 22,000 square foot cultivation area. This infers that all of the other existing cultivation areas on those parcels would be abandoned, anything in excess of 22,000 square feet. And you can see on our parcel, we have a group of cultivation areas here and then one off to the north side, center of the north side of the parcel. This one was going to develop. All of the rest of these are to be abandoned. Again, when we move on up to August 14th of 2017, staff reviewed, was taking a look at this parcel, they found that many of these cultivation areas remained under cultivation. This is pretty much the same thing. Cultivation areas here, cultivation's area, cultivation areas there remained under cultivation. At that time, the project received a denial letter from the planning department. Upon receiving that, the appellant came to the office, called, made contact with the office and protested the denial, claiming that she was only responsible for her one acre grow site containing her single 22,000 square foot cultivation area. The planning department, after that, rescinded the denial. And moving forward from there, on September 11th, the appellant actually did come in and identify the parcel that she claimed was hers on this site. And we'll get to that in a second. September 21st, code compliance goes out, inspects the parcel, finds pretty much everything in good order. There were two code viol, there were two violations. Those were promptly taken care of within two or three days and it looked like smooth sailing from there on out. On October 4th, the sheriff's office and code go out to abate all of the unregistered grows on the parcel. During that process, they discover that these, the, excuse me, the unregistered grows are connected with the registered grows. There's water diversions, other environmental and possible criminal violations occurring on the parcel. They get in a, they get a search warrant and go out and abate the rest of the property. During that, during those operations, various, various violations of the code were discovered. And based upon those violations, the registration was denied. And this is a list of the violations we have here. 165E, failure to ensure the health and safety of employees, neighboring property owners, et cetera. 165H, failure to comply with state statutes relating to sanitation, health and safety of agricultural workers. 165L, camping on the site. 165N13, unowed generator. 178, two other violations of federal, state or local law. 178A4, the application contained false and misleading information and the final reason was 178A5 was failure to inform the county of alterations to the property. The last three of those violations were discovered after staff went back and reviewed the application, the file, aerial imagery and so on and so forth. As far as the violations that were discovered during the abatement activities, I think we want to discuss first sanitation violations. And that falls under, again, California Code of Regulations, Section 3457, which requires all agricultural operations involving hand labor to provide toilet and hand washing facilities within a quarter mile or a five minute walk of the work area, whichever is shorter. Hand washing facilities are to be located in close proximity to the toilet. Employers have the responsibility to notify each employee as to the location of the sanitation facilities and potable water. They are also responsible to ensure that the employees use those facilities. It's also required that the hand washing facility have potable water, cleansing agents, single-use towels and a sign posted stating that the water is for hand washing purposes only. Regarding potable water, it is to be provided at locations readily accessible to employees and it is to be dispensed in single-use drinking cups or by fountains. All of that being said, there was a portable toilet on the site. See it right there. Portable toilet. And beside it, we have a tent and then we have a trailer, right here. Although there were, although you can see that the portable toilet did exist on the site, when, when code and sheriff's deputies got out onto the site, they noticed there were quite a few areas where defecation was occurring out in open areas. And this is just three of the photos that were taken out there. This one is particular disturbing because that is actually occurring within a seasonal stream. That is a drainage. That is gonna be in somebody's water. And there's a third one. With respect to the hand washing facility, here's the trailer. We were, you know, we went trailer, porta potty and tent over here. This is going back the other direction. This is the camping, the service area for this parcel. We have food storage, cooking, preparation occurring right here. There's a dishwashing area here and a bathing area over at the end, right there. But what we're looking for is a hand washing facility. The only things that came close to that out here were the bathing area, where you can see there's water going into that, it's like a 55 gallon plastic drum. The, the wood pallet you see right here. There is a brush right here and there's a bar of soap. This was being used for bathing, but it doesn't meet the requirements for a hand washing location. The other thing that was available, you'll see right behind that, that 55 gallon drum and in this photograph right here is the dishwashing area. We do have water here. On that table, there is some liquid soap, but we don't have any single-use towels or a sign indicating that this is for hand washing purposes only. So, there didn't seem to be a hand washing station at the site. Potable water, it wasn't apparent. Go back and look at the food storage and prep area. Don't see any, any water around here at all. That's the backside. Want to call your attention to that white cooler right there. We'll get back to that in a second. That's the back of the food prep. This is the front of the food prep. On the right-hand side, you'll see there is a hot grill or a gas burner stove with some huge pots on it. Looks like stacks of, I don't know, tortillas or something. Want to talk about that? Lots of food, lots of food preparation going on here, but there's no evidence of any potable water being provided to the agricultural workers on this site. So, for those reasons, let me get to my next page here. The appellant failed to require her employees to use the portable toilet for defecation. She failed to provide the hand washing facility and failed to provide potable water as required by the state statute. And that brings her into failure in meeting the requirements of subsection 165E and subsection 165H. We had camping on the site. We don't have as many pictures to show you here of, say 10 or 12 bedrolls around, but there's one there. Here's another bed. Looks like a cot of some sort. And then you saw the tent that was behind the portable and behind the trailer. Well, inside the tent, there was actually two beds. During the site inspection by code on September 21st, I believe it was Officer Meinhardt was told that this tent was being used to house an office. And when everybody went back on October 4th, they found that was being used for sleeping purposes. So, due to the fact that we had bedrolls, we got beds and tents, we have a dishwashing area, we have food prep, we've got a bathing area, all of those were indicative of camping and the appellant was denied for camping on the site. There were a couple of generators out by the well on, that says 2417. That's 10417. This is, again, October 4th of 2017. You can see one of those generators is hooked up to, looks like a cutoff switch or a main panel that's supplying power into that well, right there. Again, previously, Mr. Meinhardt in that inspection on September 21st, I believe, found one of these generators in a shed, but on October 4th, we find the generator actually out at the well, not in an insulated shed and it's actually appears to be operating through the pump there. So, for that reason, the registrant was denied for not meeting the requirements of subsection 165N13. In addition to those two violations, we also found some violations of state and local laws out here. On the parcel that day, I believe these are, I believe these photographs are taken within, well, this one, I believe it is the, one of the oaks that are pretty much right there in the service area. You can see that that's an antler deer skull right there. California Fish and Game Code, Chapter 4330, states it's unlawful to take any deer without first procuring a deer tag or permit. Subsection 4336A requires that, once an antler deer is taken, that that tag be affixed to the antlers of the deer. So, you're looking at that picture right there. There's no tag on that antler's skull. That tag is to remain there for 15 days, actually, after that, that animal is taken. Furthermore, subsection 4336B states it is unlawful to possess any untagged deer. And what you see right there is a photograph taken by Fish and Game. That is that white cooler that was pointed out to you before and it's, looks like it's full of quartered deer. And that's what was discovered on the site that day. So, in failing to meet the requirements of the state law in terms of procuring a tag and all of the requirements of hunting deer out there, the registrant failed to meet the requirements of 178A2. Also, under 178A2 was this violation of failure to obtain a building permit. This is what is going to become a drying tent. This was what I believe actually led into the email chain between the appellant and our office in regards to whether a permit was required to erect this and the ant. The short answer is yes. A structure like this would always have been required to get a permit, but at this time, the policy was under review by the new head of the building department and was determined that these structures would be commercial buildings. So, they would have to meet the code in that respect. That determination hadn't been quite met, made yet. However, the appellant was instructed to hold off on erecting this, specifically by Mr. Meinhardt from code, who was out there on the date this photograph was taken, September 21st. And I believe he instructed the appellant not to erect that until they had clearance from either planning or building department, get a permit. That decision needs to be dealt with before you put this up. 14 days later, the structure is up. When code and sheriff's officers are out there, this is what they find. So, for that reason, failure to obtain the required permit, again, the appellant was denied under section 1795178A2. For the rest of this, we have a series, it's all kind of interrelated, false and misleading information, failure to inform the county that changes have been made that would affect the registration. And just to give that a little lead in here, this is, this illustration here is of the area the appellant identified as her cultivation area when she came to the planning department offices on, I believe it was September 11th. She identified that area as her cultivation areas. And what you can see is actually there are these other grow areas going on over here, the north area of the site. And you can see the road leading down and back. Basically, this road comes back in and through the service and the camping area on, on this parcel. And a little more background, this is the portion of the letter Barnett wrote to Calgress Planning and states, "Two issues did come up during our," and again, these letters were submitted with the application. So, this, this gave us ground rules that we were working with or what their proposal was. "Two issues did come up during review and will need to be remedied in compliance, to be in compliance with county and water board. First, my client has more canopy square footage located on the property than that allowable by county ordinance, which is 22,000 square feet per parcel. We have estimated that each of the 1399 cultivation gardens is between 8,000 and 12,000 square feet with a total canopy of 104 to 156,000 square feet. As the total area for all three parcels is 66,000 square feet, my client will need to consolidate to the allotted canopy per parcel. We have identified the cultivation areas to remain for 12 and 13 on the attached site map." What's important here, as far as our argument is, is one of the main points is that the cultivation areas were to remain. That implies that we did have cultivation on cultivation area. I think I'm losing track of whether it's 12 or 4, but the designated cultivation area, it's cultivation area 4 for this parcel. The letter that Barnett sent to the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Board has a couple of statements. I want to start right here. "The county is allowing cultivators lenience in relocating gardens that are within the required setback from a property line 75 feet or are not in compliance with water board setbacks from surface water. Because this project contains cultivation canopy greater than the county allotted 22,000 square feet per parcel, my client will be shutting down a number of the gardens shown on the attached figure and consolidating efforts into half acre plot per parcel." That's the bargain we were making there. And the last thing here is the lease agreement. This is the one I've been talking about, the January 1st, 2017 lease agreement. You can see it's between Can I Help You and the landlord AK Builders. And right there, all of the following parcels. Parcel 41, this is 603, our subject parcel right now. So, as of that date, the appellant has complete control of these parcels. Again, just take a quick look at what we're talking about here. This is the designated area to be, for the 22,000 square feet compliant grow to be located at, right here. That is an existing area. These are all other existing grows. Those are going to be eliminated. And again, right here, area 4, cultivation area number 4, and it says to remain. That is an existing cultivation area, we're being told. In truth, what was going on out there just pretty much two months later is this. This is county aerial from August 20th. You can see that we don't have a consolidation occurring on the site. This is the, this is the location that the appellant is later going to identify as her, her 22,000 registered cultivation area. The rest of these are still these unregistered grows, which have not been removed from the site. This is almost two months after the registration submitted to our office. This is a close-up right here. Again, that is your future cultivation area that the appellant will identify. And these are the existing cultivation areas which have not been removed. Those are unregistered grows. Now, if we move on up to the following year, this year, this is June 1st of this year. And what has happened is the designated area that she eventually developed is right here. She has abandoned the unregistered grows here, here, here and here. So, if you were to drive up into this valley, what you're going to see is her registered cultivation area. What you're not going to necessarily see is on up the road here where these three unregistered grows remain. And these two unregistered grows are developed this year. And this shows that a little better because this is a Google, you're swinging around, you're looking back downhill from the unregistered grows towards the cultivation area. These, this is taken, you can see, June 28th, 2017. And we have the three that were previously there and have not been removed. Not only that, these two others have been established. Down in the valley below us, we can see the licensed cultivation area, right there. And this is all cleaned out. The other cultivation areas that were down here have not, were taken out. So, if you drove up there, you would see her registered cultivation area. That's about all you would see unless you went up the hill. In addition, what, these are the evidence photos that were submitted with the application. And they show, what you can see right there, obviously are canvas plants planted in the earth, hills. And you can see this, the date on the one on the left is May 2nd, 2016. We also had this photograph submitted. It says March 29th, 2016. And it shows a bunch of pots inside of the greenhouse, a people else structures of some sort. And the last two were these aerials right here. And these are actually not of our cultivation area. These, 1, 2, 3, these are the unregistered grows uphill. We actually have a property lying right here. This is parcel 41. Our parcel down here above us is parcel 42. This right here is actually kind of like the corner of 41 and 39 is back over here. The ultimately, the cultivation area that was ultimately developed is off, is off the corner of this image right here. So, we're really not, neither of these really is a photograph of the area that was ultimately developed. So, let me just kind of see if I can sum this up, if I can find my notes right here. So, because the appellant's application contained information representing the cultivation area to be existing and contained information representing that all existing cultivation areas exceeding the 22,000 allowable square feet of cultivation on the parcel would be abandoned, and it also contained photographs showing cultivation activities were not occurring at the area that was actually cultivated, the appellant failed to meet the requirements of 178A4, which is false misinformation. And because the appellant didn't tell us that they were developing that new cultivation area and because they also failed to abandon the unregistered grow areas as represented in the Barnett letter submitted with their application, they failed to inform us that they were making modifications to their project, which would not, which would not allow them to remain in compliance with the urgency. So, for all those reasons, the denial was issued on 10/23/17. And then the appeal actually came in, her appeal was dated November 6th and we actually rescinded on November 7th. And in the appeal letter, the appellant explained that she does provide portable restrooms on her property and is frustrated with her inability to get her employees to use the toilets. And she explained that it is a vast area to inspect and the environment's a bit concerned and that the open defecation was prohibited on her site. She provided this photograph to show she has a hand washing station. Again, we didn't see that when we, when code and the sheriff's office was out there on October 4th. The deal here is that simply providing that toilet that we saw before does not relieve her from the responsibility of ensuring that her appellant's use that. That open defecation is just absolutely ridiculous. She didn't provide a service record indicating that that portable toilet had ever been used. And also in this picture right here, the things that we don't have are the sign indicating that the water's only for hand washing purposes or any towels or soap or anything like that. It's not failed to meet the requirements for a hand washing station. This, actually, that photo right there is very similar to what we see in the photograph that was taken out there by the sheriff on October 4th. that was taken out there by the sheriff on October fourth. You can see, I believe that's the same faucet and maybe one of the same buckets. I'm not sure.
So Paul, you've been going for about thirty minutes. So what I'd like to do is have you wrap up if you could, and that way we can get her going, and I'm going to give her extra time since you took extra time.
No worries. I'll do that very quickly here. She had a number of reasons why she believed camping wasn't occurring on out, on her site out there. One of them was that there was no harvesting going on. And what we see out there on October fourth is that there is harvesting going on, that is cannabis hung on the fence, and you will also see cannabis in the drying tent. I think we had some testimony in the previous appeal that this grow area at this site had not been harvested. So there is a question as to where all of this cannabis came from. Kind of unresolved. She gave us this photograph in her appeal letter to show she did have a generator shed. However, there's no generator in it. She claimed that her and her husband and family are avid sportsmen and they respect the game laws, and she was horrified that somebody had gone out there and shot a deer on her parcel. And in response to the questions about what happened with the site development, why we acquired a new site instead of the cultivation actually occurring on one of her existing sites, the appellant explained that because of setback requirements from seasonal storm drainages, the seasonal creeks, she was required to move her cultivation area. Doesn't relieve her of the responsibility of informing us. Actually, this is from the site management plan, and the, these orange lines are actually your setbacks from your creeks. You can see creek, creek, setback, setback. So this is an area that was actually an existing cultivation site that could have been developed. You can see it is outside of the, the setback area. This is actually another one up here on the hill that could have been developed. They didn't do that. They chose to develop a whole new site. And again, that is her identification of her cultivation area. What's really unfortunate about all of this is that if she would have came into our office and informed us, these other two sites could possibly have been developed with that twenty-two thousand square feet. They are outside of that setback from the seasonal storm drainages. But had she come into our office, this whole project would have become, would have come under review again, and it would have become pretty obvious that we still had unregistered grows being cultivated out there in violation of what Mr. Barnett represented in the application. And again, this is June first of this year. She does have her ultimate area developed here. The valley is empty. The existing previous grows have been cleared out here, here, here. And the unregistered grows continue to be developed and expanded up on the hill. And I think that's about it. I'm not going to really run back through all of the reasons. I think we've been pretty well through that, why she was denied. There were also a couple of reasons we had denied her originally, and one of those was grading after May tenth and an unpermitted trailer. We reviewed those, and those reasons were dropped from the denial. However, I think all of these other reasons remain valid reasons, and for that reason, this appellate's appeal should be denied.
Thank you.
Paul, I just have one question. I meant to ask at the other one. When we have two assessors' parcel number, and then it adds up to parcel forty-one, where does that designation come from?
I'll have Peter answer.
In many cases, if a property crosses a section line, they could be in different tax rate areas, and so the assessor's office will assign two parcel numbers, assessors' parcel numbers. They don't necessarily mean it's a, they're, they're two legal parcels. It's just purely for assessment purposes. So we've determined this is a legal, one single legal parcel. It just has two parcel numbers.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions, or would you like to hear from the appellant? Okay, would you like to come up and give your presentation? And I will give you a little extra time if you need it, since we, the county used extra time.
Were you going to do them first, or?
I think that they pretty much said what they needed to say, and if they want to come back up later, they can.
I'd like to thank the chair for allowing me the extra time.
You're very welcome. We're going to charge you for that.
So how much time?
Sorry, me?
How much time, then?
He used forty minutes.
Well, how much time do you want to give her?
Let's just see where she gets to, and we'll, we'll just go from there.
And if it's okay, if it pleases the commission, if I could bring up a, my, my husband, just to help me with regards to any specific answers, if that's okay?
Absolutely. If I could ask you, when you hand things out, if you could just hand them all, because we have cords and stuff here, and they don't want people to trip. So if you just take everything to net, we'll bring it around.
I, I don't think I have anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, getting my notes ready.
Distinguished and honorable commissioners, thank you so much for your time. So you have a little bit of background on me, what drives my passion for being a farmer, and some plans for this parcel. While preparing for this denial hearing, I was frustrated and thinking to myself, what am I doing here? Why am I going through this? The depression and stress were unbearable. Then I watched the Sanjay Gupta CNN documentary for weed and got a boost of adrenaline like a jolt of energy as a reminder of why I am a cannabis cultivator, thinking of my daughter as my motivation. Cannabis cultivation tugs at my heartstrings. This gives me the energy to see this through, especially with so much against me. What occurred on site was such an unfortunate circumstance. As stated in my initial appeal, as Murphy's Law would have it, what could go wrong, went wrong. It was a series of unfortunate events. The information used to build a case against me will paint me as a stick man for the cartel. Do the cartels fight for their cannabis registrations before a planning commission? They simply move on and go to another site, from what I hear. The denial items at hand are ones I take very seriously. Poaching, firearms, water diversion, excess canopy from illegal grows on the hill, health and safety standards. It wasn't until that fateful day of October fourth was I made aware of the firearms, water diversion, and poaching had occurred on the property, thanks to the sheriff's office. The firearms were brought on by, on site, unbeknownst to me or my manager, by new tremors. The action items in the staff report rebuttal will prevent this from ever occurring with a pat-down search, personal belonging search, and no vehicles on the property than those tagged with the sheriff's office. I will dwell further on this. You do have a copy of it in the handout. Regarding the illegal grow sites on the hill, where it reads in the staff report, and I quote, "Those unregistered cultivation areas have legally been under the appellant's control since January first, two thousand and seventeen." This is incorrect. The unregistered cultivation areas were never under my control. The staff report also states the appellant failed to inform the county that a new cultivation area was being established, and failed to inform the county that they intended to continue to cultivate many of the unregistered cultivation areas. The application for the registration was invalidated. Beginning of this year, I was put between a rock and a hard place. There were some mishaps in two thousand and sixteen which made me want to move from Waco Trail Road for the growing season of two thousand and seventeen. On a few occasions beginning of the year, I asked Miguel about two, three times, and Ms. Deborah, maybe once, I saw her in the hallway in the planning department, if I could move my registration to another grow site. Do all that's required, comply, and be able to move my site. Their reply was, because there's no permanent ordinance in place, I'm unable to do so. So I stayed. When I saw more traffic come to my site, more new faces on my site heading up the hill and without my authorization, I knew I had a problem. This started around the end of May. When I inquired with the new folks, I was advised this grow site was a collective and would follow the state ninety-nine license standards. I knew this was incorrect as I went through many hoops with Calaveras County to be compliant with the urgency ordinance. I was happy to see the sheriff's office helicopter hovering over the hill quite a few times while I was on the ranch, so to make their presence known. I only saw how big this illegal grow site was in the aerial footage offered by Miguel when I needed to sign proof of my grow site on said parcel. Google Maps at that time didn't update as of yet, so I was unable to see exactly how big their site was. I did share the well, but really, I had no choice. From the beginning, when I was called to the planning department for excess canopy, I expressed to Miguel Contreras, the illegal site on the hill is not mine. Miguel told me I have to bring my site into compliance, yet I told him, if the illegal grow site on the hill is not mine, how do I go about doing this? I was worried for retaliation from these growers. I didn't know these folks. Miguel stated, you shouldn't have to take the law into your own hands. I'll have code compliance come out and issue a citation. Code compliance did come out. They issued the citation. I met them at the gate. If you can imagine the relief I felt knowing that the proper authorities were there to address this matter. When I received the rescindment of my first denial on September eighth, it read, "As per our conversation today, your cultivation site must be in compliance with all provisions of the Calaveras County Urgency Ordinance, no later than September twenty-second. Failure to do so will result in this cultivation site being denied. Consider this a formal warning to come into compliance by the above-mentioned date." I took this to heart, and I scheduled my Calaveras County Code Compliance Site Inspection on September twenty-first. It just so happened to be my birthday, too. I had only two items to fix that day. Reflective tape on my registration signs and the garden's lock chains. I was very happy for this. Best birthday ever. As stated in my appeal, my manager was on vacation from September twenty-seventh and due back October fourth. The tremors were supervised by two ranch hands in my manager's absence. This is, in my opinion, when it became the Wild West. This is the best explanation I could find, with poaching and firearms, all at my expense. As stated in my appeal, my husband and I are avid hunters. Finding there was a deer harvested illegally was unacceptable. Firearms on my property are prohibited unless it's hunting season, all with the proper licensing and tags. In my action plan and action items in my rebuttal to the staff report, I include a process by which employees will come to work and what to expect, including a pat-down, a search, a search of personal items. I wasn't present on the ranch on a daily basis, as discussed earlier. I mean, you don't have to sit there and watch it grow. You go in, water the plants, neut them, and offer nutrients as needed, and then you leave. There's no need to be there on a daily basis. In turn, the water parcel, the well on parcel forty-one pumps forty to fifty gallons per minute. I use it to feed all three plots, but on thirty-nine, between April and July, this well supplies thirty-nine only. As with the open defecation, I have portable toilets on site. Please find in the employee packet the intake criteria distributed on the second page of your handout. October fourth was such a wake-up call for me. It reminds me of how new I am in the business, but I'm willing to learn. I'm willing to push forward, look ahead, and find out how to fix the situation. I have plans to put systems into play if given the opportunity to still be a cannabis farmer in Calaveras. I ask you to look at the facts, take notice of all I've completed to comply with the So instead of telling you what I'm going to do, what I'm going to do, what I'm going to do, and skirt the issue, yes, I should have been more vigilant on the ranch. That paranoia that I feel now after being abated should have kicked in a long time ago. I take full responsibility, and I'm not proud of it. The excess canopy illegal grow was not mine. I had no responsibility to it at all. The water diversion for materials of previous growers and illegal growers on the hill, can that be without a doubt? Could that possibly not be mine? It could. As there is so much trash still to pick up and gather and what was left behind, I implore you to please assess if there's, without a shadow of a doubt, that I had any knowledge of defecation, firearms, poaching, water diversion within this timeframe, or my, being a grower on the site, was it intentional? The pictures offered in my appeal letter, if you look at them, or maybe if Paul can show, bring them up. The five gallon bucket, the blue bucket. So if I could just walk you through my mindset, my thinking, we just got abated. Everything's gone. Nothing. We have nothing. I have possible charges against me from everyone. I don't know where to go, how to make sense of it all. So what did I do? I received the appeal letter, and I said, well, let's see if we can put something together because right now, there's like nothing we can do to get a formal washing station. There's just no time. So I put things together just to say that there is, I'm trying to justify and help what, you know, just as, I'm trying to make my rights, my wrongs right, in other words. So if you want to flip through. But yes, that was, it was at no point was I trying to mislead you with showing a five gallon bucket. Of course, I can try to get the real system put together and delivered and have another inspection, which is what I was, under the impression, if you have violations, you get re-inspected. I invite you to come to my ranch, inspect me on a weekly basis. Come visit my site, no appointment necessary. And you'll see that from those pictures, my ranch did not look like that. Yeah, there's food there, but people have to eat lunch, but yes, that was in excess. I admit that. And this is where I faltered. So I appreciate your time. And ready for questions. Thank you so much.
I have one question. So the, the hand washing station that you shared in your photo, was the orange bucket that was next to the dishwashing station?
Yeah, well, I, I tried to put something together in my mindset, and I was like, okay, hand washing station, let's see what I can do to try to appease it, you know? We're abated. We're broke. There's nothing left. And we're, we're trying to pick up.
You were just putting the orange bucket on the, on the dish.
Yes, and, you know, if my explanation, maybe if I included towel and soap, maybe, would that be, would that be sufficient, Paul, do you say? And then in terms of any disposal of hand washing water, is, would it be okay to put it in the porta potty? I'm just curious.
I wouldn't know about disposal of the water, but it also needs.
Yeah, okay, so we need to address the questions to the commissions.
Oh, sorry.
He's not, yeah, it's okay, I understand what you're doing.
I'm just.
I, I just have a specific question for you. You said something that I hadn't heard earlier, and that was about Miguel.
Oh, yes.
That you actually turned in the illegal growers on your property? Is that what I understood you saying?
He called me in, and he, and he called me and says, hey, you have excess canopy. I said, no, I don't. It is not my grow. Well, you need to come in and sign this paper, which I did. And that was the paper signed on the eleventh of September.
And you're telling me that somebody actually went out there, code compliance, because of those grows?
Yes, yes. He sent code compliance out, code compliance went out. This is what Sabrina and Reba were discussing last one, that they came out, they issued the citation, and they left. So I'm like, oh, yes, they can get rid of these people up on the hill. But this is where they're trying to collude that, oh, she knew, and, no, I didn't know. And I will keep that stance for the rest of my life. Do you think I would jeopardize? Do you think I would jeopardize?
But you knew, you knew they were there because you turned them in.
Yes, yes. And that's where the gray area is, and this was my fear of retaliation if I were a whistleblower and went to the county if something were to happen. That was, you know, it was my fear. Yes, ma'am.
So why was the pipe going between your well and toward, up toward those on the hill?
I think in this case, I was just bullied. They said, "Guess what? We're gonna use your well," you know? And I was bullied.
You think you were?
This is my husband Freddie.
Hello.
Freddie, can you answer the question about the drainage in the well, the, or the water lines running up to the other grows?
Yes, ma'am. Late May, early June, I had a chance to go to the ranch. I love the ranch. I'm always there when I have a chance. Work allows me. I went over there, and where the well is on 41, it was only directed towards 39 and 42. No. Yes. Can I see the map of the layout, please?
Do you work, do you work on the grow?
No, no, ma'am. I'm an independent welder.
Okay, but you know about all of this?
Boy, do I.
Like, you're gonna be able to point where, who was doing what, and you don't work there?
I don't think anyone knows the property better than I do and Ken. What actually took place was late May, early June, I had come to the property, and I think we're running out of juice here. And we have a well that the owner had put in. I'm pressing it on, but look. So right here is 41 and right, let me hold my hand down here, right here is where the well is. Now, this well right here feeds 41 right here, and then it's piped out to 42 over here. When I came late May, early June, there was a connection right here. They teed off this corner. There's a, there's a slope to this plot, so we believe the water can trickle down and try not to water too much, but share the water on it. But these guys tied into here and then ran it up the hill to a tank here. They had an industrial pump here that pushed it up to another tank up here. So what I did, I cut their pipe right here, and, and I put a blank on it. I blocked it off. We knew nothing about these folks. I didn't know any of them personally at that time, so we came back the next day, they had re-hooked it. So I decided to go up the hill. So I went up the hill, before I even got to this area, I saw one of them here where the tank is. I think it's right about here. So I approached him, and I asked him, "Why are they hooking up?" And they said that they were collectives, some green company. So I tried to get ahold of the owner, who is my older brother. He always works out of state, too, so I couldn't get ahold of him. It was later on that he said these folks had all the right paperwork or something like that, that they were gonna grow. In July, I pumped on 39, the electricals went bad. So I called Brisky, see what kind of window they would have open to come and look at it. And it was originally drilled by Tango for the previous grower. They told me that it would be up to two weeks because it was really busy for them at that time. So what we did was, we cut the pipe from where 39 well is and used that, bought extra pipe to run to 39 from 41 during that two-week period. But as far as water diversions, Mr. Johnson's been nothing but a kind neighbor, and I want to explain something to y'all. On 39, we can't see it here, but this stream runs in our property, even after I had it surveyed by Motherlow out of Angels Camp. And Craig over there showed me the drawings and everything. All the creek on 39, there's only about, I think, 200 feet where the easement is belongs to Mr. Johnson. But I decided to fence inside our property, the other side of the stream, because he enjoys the streams. We only supply out of 39 only for a couple of months because Ken said it might be the reason that's draining the stream.
Okay, so you're not tapping into Ken's, Mr. Johnson's, stream? It's the other people that were?
No, ma'am. He and I went back and forth on these previous growers, and we couldn't stand them.
Okay, keep addressing the commission. Thank you.
We didn't even want to go to the ranch anymore.
Okay, so what you're telling us is that the owner of the land knew and was leasing it out to multiple people as a collective? You were the only registered grow on this site?
Yes, ma'am.
On all three parcels you had a grow? Or just two?
Ma'am, I do believe there's a mistake there. When you say parcels, there's 1,047 acres. All we wanted was the three acres.
But you leased.
We didn't read carefully the lease.
But you leased three one-acre parcels?
Yes, ma'am.
And you had three registered grows?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So you had one acre on each parcel?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And you're the only one that was registered out of all of them?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But you didn't turn the other grows in until Miguel called you and said that he thought they were your grows. You never turned them in, correct?
And this is where it was, because we didn't know these people, we were, you know, fearful that there could be retaliation. We don't know these people, and I feel at a loss because, hello, I'm leasing the property. This is my grow site. It could definitely jeopardize everything, if not life. It could also jeopardize my licenses.
But you, you had a lease on the whole 1,047 acres, right?
It doesn't, well, it shows and reads the parcel numbers, although, I mean, if someone's gonna do something illegally, are they really going to?
Okay, but you, you had the lease, you had the right to occupy it. And your brother-in-law owned it through his corporation, right?
That is correct. He owns it.
Okay, now, when, when you saw these people you didn't know coming on there, why didn't you go to the owner and say, "I've got a lease on this property. Nobody else should have because I've got it. I don't want these people here." Did you do that?
Yeah.
I did, sir.
And what did he say?
He said that they were under state law.
On his ground?
Yes, sir.
Under your lease?
He was doing caretaker grow, is what he told them. That's why he was saying caretaker, and they were saying 99 or less. That's what they're talking about.
Under state law, they used the.
Do you understand state law to permit somebody to go on somebody else's property? They don't have a lease on or own and grow wherever they want?
I think they had a lease going or proposed to, to happen, as far as I know. These folks were coming in state legal. It's, that's the most definite words I could repeat to you.
That's what your brother told you?
Yes, sir.
And I must admit, it makes it so difficult because I went through the application process with Calaveras. He notarized my landlord consent. All of that was done with his knowledge, and there went the state on the hill for those grows. So.
Let me ask another question. If I understand this right, there started out to be 13 grow sites on this whole, over 1,000 acres, wound up to be eight at one point, and you, you abandoned some of the ones that you had earlier, correct?
Yes, this is correct.
Were there any sites that you had earlier in 2016 that you did not abandon?
Now, and this is where I am unsure, and he and I were discussing this. When, when we said, based on our, you know, designating the location, where it needs to be, and I was like, "Wait, were we supposed to break down those, those little..." And I was, from what we discussed, we thought we were grandfathered in, hence the beginning of 2016. As many meetings as we've been to, that question never, I'm so sorry.
Well, the letter that your consultant Barnett sent to the planning department said that you would consolidate the 13 into three, not five or six, correct?
That is correct.
Where did you get the idea you got to keep another three on top of the three you registered for?
This is my impression that we were grandfathered in as the beginning of 2016. My impression was, we, whatever plants go in the ground as of May 10th, you know, you are grandfathered in, and then you section out your, what you want to locate, go through the water board, and then grow the rest, the remainder of the year. And then you use those legal ones for 2017, beginning harvest season.
Did anybody from the planning department tell you anything that led you to believe that?
No. I, you know, it never came.
So what we have here, it admitted three grows that were not registered, that you were in control of, right?
He's talking about the, the ones that we didn't shut down as of the May 16th, which we were unaware. Remember, we thought we were grandfathered in to keep those through the course of 2016, and then go 2017 with those three beginning in 23.
Is that the consolidation that Barnett was talking about? Or was, because my understanding, reading that letter, was the consolidation was taking in the illegal grows and your grows, because he pointed to quite a few of those on that letter. That was gonna be my next question, is how many grows were yours? And when, we, the one thing that was really hurting you for me right now was that letter that your engineer wrote consolidating all of those grows. Was it not clear to your engineer they weren't your grows?
No, it was, well, in terms of the consolidation, I was thinking consolidating for the next 2017 year for my particular legal three grows. This is what I understood.
But you were taking, in that consolidation, you were taking from the rows that were up on the hill, correct?
No, are we talking 2016? Because those were all, and I showed everything to the county what I had.
When, when you were consolidating, why, you were consolidating from up the hill down to where your, where you had your consolidated grow on this parcel, correct?
So if you look, if you look at this map, this is the map I turned in to the county application.
Can you tell us the page number on the bottom?
There's, let me see if there's a better one. Yeah, I think that's the best one. So I wasn't sure what kind of plot plan to do, or what was, it, this was part of my submittal, and I showed everything that I had 2016. And the three thumbnails is what I, I said, "Okay, we're gonna choose this one, this one, this one, and we will consolidate," meaning, well, from what my understanding was, "We'll finish the grow season with all of this, and then consolidate 2017 for my three legal responsible grows."
So all of those red thumbtacks were your grows?
Were grow sites, yes, ma'am.
Now, you've royally lost me, because aren't those the illegal grows that were eradicated?
No, ma'am.
Ma'am, those, everything we planted on were existing. Those plots were existing. I don't like chopping trees or anything, so we just used those plots that was used in 2015, in 2016.
And that was the hun, I'm sorry, that was the 106,000 acres that they were talking about earlier? 105,000 acres? 100, 105,000 square feet, pardon me. So those totaled up your 105,000 square feet.
So 2016, this is what was there. We designated one, two as a designation, the yellow thumbtacks, for our three different parcel. And as of May 10th, we had plants there. The, the current site, which is this one, is the, was the site that had 99 plants, but in pots. They were not in grounds as of yet, in the ground as of yet. So 2017, these were decommissioned, decommissioned, all of these decommissioned, keeping my yellow ones for my legal cannabis grows.
Okay. Were you growing the yellow at the same time you were growing the red?
Yes.
Okay. And you were assuming the reds were a collective 215 grow? Is that what you were thinking with that?
You mean, these reds, or?
Yeah.
These reds on the hill?
You said 99 plants.
Yeah, uh, yes. Well, I mean, I'm not sure what they did exactly on the hill, but this one in particular for 41, this was my, my location for 99 plants in pots. They were not in the ground. So, but this is the illegal. We did not use this. This is what was used this year illegally, which was not mine.
In 2016, were you using those that you were just circling?
Yes, that they were in, they were in use.
So they were part of what was being consolidated under the master plan?
Correct, correct.
And then somebody else came in and replanted there in 2017 because the brother leased out the land to another individual?
Right, and we cleaned all those, too.
Okay.
Okay, so let's get.
We had grass growing on it.
Okay.
Let's get past all this, and let's talk about the illegal camping, and let's talk about the deer, and let's talk about the way the property looked. So that was all under your lease, your people, your stuff again, correct?
It, it, within that timeframe, in terms of any camping, of course, you know, I should have been more vigilant. There were trimmers there that I've never, never used before. And that location, the responsibility is mine, yes. You know, I tell you what, I would, I would trim every bud myself because I don't want to trust anyone else on a property that is mine.
So the property, has the property been cleaned?
It, yes.
So I want to know how it was cleaned. How was that creek cleaned up, or they were using it for their personal toilet?
I have cleaned up all the toilet paper I found.
Okay, so you cleaned up the toilet paper, but what did you do with the rest of it?
Yes, I am, I am doing some research to see exactly, is there some sort of a retardant that I can put to remedy this? I mean, I would like to go through the property and clean all the, you know, clean whatever is leftover, whatever is there.
Actually, don't care what's on the property. I care what's in the creek.
Yeah. I, yes, I care everywhere. I mean.
Was it your impression that you had a lease on the entire three parcels?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And so all of a sudden, there were other people using it, and your brother-in-law explained that they were there because of some state, right?
Correct, correct.
And, and I understand, you wouldn't want to just march up there and stand on the hill and say, "This is mine. Get off." I don't know what happened. As far as the water line, once they reconnected, did you let that stay reconnected?
Yes, sir. It was part of their lease, they said, to share their well with us, so.
This is what your brother told you, or what they?
They told me.
With the people you found at the top of the hill?
That's correct.
Okay. Really strange circumstances.
No, not really. 2015, Ken Johnson knows about it. I let the sheriff in. They had water diversions on top of the hill at the federal.
BLM land.
The BLM, next to us. They had 10,000 plants there with water diversions everywhere. We, we came into an area that Ken warned me about. So if I'm bringing my family out there at that time, I had to make sure it's safe, so I would scout it myself on the four-wheeler, just to make sure my family was safe. That's how it was in there.
If you guys, if you don't have any further questions at the moment, can we bring up some of the staff people, like maybe Miguel and Courtney, and just get a few more questions answered, and then bring them back if we have further asking? Okay, thank you. Would you mind if we do that?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Miguel, can we have you come up, please?
Afternoon.
Good afternoon, so I just want to confirm that you had conversations, and that you did participate in having code compliance go out there?
I did, however, it's not exactly the way Ms. Tawley, or Tawley, described it. She had initially been denied on, uh, the subject parcel. She contacted the planning department, I'm the one that picked up the phone, uh, she was informed, or questioning why she was denied, I explained to her about the excess canopy, and she informed me that those are all illegal cultivation sites. This is the first time I've heard the ninety-nine plant argument or anything like that, she, she said they were illegal cultivation sites. I, uh, had her come in to the counter to better explain it to me, I printed a three, or I printed out a copy of each of the parcels, six oh one, six oh two, and six oh three, and I asked her to highlight or to circle and sign which of the cultivation areas was hers. She, uh, identified them, I think Paul has the, those aerials, and she stated that the other ones are illegal grows, and she's afraid to go up there and tell them to go away.
When she talked about those being ninety-nine plants, she meant from 2016, in 2017, she's considering them illegal, they weren't hers then?
Correct.
Okay, that's different from what you're saying, or that sounds the same to me?
Well, what I'm saying is that, um, I, this is the first time I heard a ninety-nine plant argument.
Okay.
That's basically what I'm trying to say. So, what happened with the original denial is that she was denied for excess canopy, she explained that those weren't her grows, those were illegal. Um, her 2016 lease stated that she was in control of one acre of the parcel, so therefore the planning, I brought it to Peter, the planning director, found that, uh, being in control of one acre doesn't mean you're in control of the whole property, therefore she wasn't responsible for the whole, the whole parcel. However, um, at that point, we weren't aware of a 2017 lease that gave her control of the entire parcel.
Okay.
And that's why it was rescinded.
So I'd like to sort of confirm and elaborate a little bit on that, yes, you know, what Miguel says is correct, um, the, the, um, you know, she was made aware of the fact, the first time that, that we had any communication with, with her was after we had received new aerial imaging that had been taken in June, uh, we didn't get those until August twentieth, and so then it was pointed out, gee, we've got all this excess cultivation going on here, so we just, you know, denied it, um, when
Which year, seventeen?
Two thousand seventeen, yes, um, and so the, uh, we got those images on August twentieth, we denied the application on September ninth, she came in a couple days later, and more of an abundance of caution, because, you know, we weren't sure about the issue of this lease, and whether or not she really did have control over the entire site, so we'll just rescind it for now, and we'll, you know, we'll do some more investigation on it, and then after the, um, code compliance inspection and the sheriff's activity in the site, we, you know, we felt it was appropriate to deny the whole thing. The, what, the way I understand, that the, the state issue was these other growers were apparently trying to utilize the former Prop two fifteen provision that you could cultivate up to ninety-nine plants as a collective, um, that, I think sort of moot, actually, it doesn't really matter, under our ordinance, you know, a cultivator is allowed on a parcel. And, um, that clearly was in excess, um, and so we felt that, you know, in addition to that fact, that there, the property was in violation, um, and, you know, maybe she didn't have complete control of that, because she was leasing it from her brother-in-law, that the entire action, you know, the, the permit, the, the registration is for the par, the parcel, and so that was in violation, as well as all of the other violations that turned up subsequent to that, and that's why we end up re-denying the application.
Okay, so, we had something else you wanted to add?
I just want to say that in terms of my participation with the code compliance aspect of it, is, uh, the reason I had her come in and circle which of the cultivation sites were hers was so when code compliance and the sheriff's department went out there, they didn't eradicate hers on the state that it might be an illegal one.
Okay.
That's basically it.
Okay, cool, Courtney.
Again, Courtney Myerhart with Calaveras County Code Compliance, um, the site was spotless, there was a trailer on the property, did not appear to be being lived in, it was full of more junk than anything. The tent had no, it was just a tent, there was nothing in the tent, there was no bed rolls, no blow-up mattresses, nothing like I saw when I went back. The tent that you saw erected, the drying tent, she was specifically told not to put that up by me until we figured out what we were doing with the permitting process for that kind of use. The other thing that was brought up by Sabrina was that, um, very little was cultivated from what I had saw, you know, on the twenty-first. Those plants still look more or less intact, there was a couple of them that had been harvested, but obviously not enough to fill that structure and the fence line.
So do you know how that structure got full? Do you suspect where that came from?
I can only, I did not go up to the upper ones on either visits, so I don't know, but I would assume that it came down from
Sabrina might have more information on that, okay, she does, okay.
And just, just, as a question, was it a matter of personal safety that you didn't go to the upper ones?
No, I wasn't there to inspect those, because at that time, when I went out there on the, on the twenty-first, I knew that they were there, but I wasn't there to inspect those, because those were illegal, and when I went up there on the, when the sheriff was there, um, that was not budgeted into my time for that day.
Right, and, yeah, I, I, it's never been clear to me, when the decision was made to eradicate the crops that she is taking responsibility for.
I will let Sabrina to talk to that.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hello, Ken? Okay, I just wanted to clarify a few things, as Miguel said, her denial was rescinded, so I issued a citation to AK Builders for the remaining cultivation on the property, leaving out that twenty-two thousand square feet. And per our code, we were required to post our citation at the property. I called her because it's very difficult to find, and told her what was going on, she seemed happy to be getting rid of the, um, bad players, as they say, and, um, when Miguel rescinded the denial, he gave her a strict two-week deadline to be in full compliance, meaning there will be no re-inspections, no corrections given, you are to be in full compliance by September twenty-second. So when I met her at the property on the twelfth to post the citation, I asked her if she wanted me to take a look at her grow site, because as we are all very well aware, there's a lot of confusion regarding our ordinance, so if she wanted me to clarify anything, or just, you know, do a courtesy check to see if there's anything that needed to be fixed, because she would not be getting a second chance, she said, no, I don't want you to see it until it's ready. That's fine, but I just found it odd, because if you're investing this much, one would think, you know, you would take any opportunity to do it right. So, um, once my citation deadline was up, I obtained a warrant to abate the unregistered grows that were up on the hill. The sheriff's office goes with us, they clear the property, when they were clearing the property, several subjects leg-veiled, they took off, there was a truck driving down the top of the hill, the bed of the truck was full of bud, it was not tarp down, it was not secured, one would think it, you know, um, if they were gonna take it on the road to transport it somewhere, they would try and disguise it, so it would only lead me to believe that they were bringing that bud down from the top to the drying tent, which was full of bud that was drying. And her, which was right next to her parcel, which was, as Courtney said, intact, it had not been harvested, it could not have possibly filled that drying tent to that extent.
And when you say buds, you mean the branches we see hanging with the buds on?
Yeah, the flower, the valuable part of the plant. Um, and then I forgot to mention also, I mentioned earlier, on the twelfth, when I was with her, I observed an ATV drive down on that road from the top of the hill down to her grow site.
And stopped?
Yeah, directly to her grow site, so I have a hard time believing that they're not connected. Any other questions? Oh, and, um, what led to the eradication was while we were out there doing my abatement, the sheriff observed such, you know, gross violations and obvious correlations between the registered and unregistered grows, that they obtained a search warrant and eradicated the rest.
So that was, that was when the decision was made
Yes.
By the sheriff to go for the search warrant because of the linkage?
Yes, under my warrant, we confiscated all of the marijuana on the hill, and under their warrant, they got everything else, including all of her three registered sites.
It's all becoming clear?
Hopefully, I know it's confusing, so if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just a curiosity question, more than anything.
Okay.
How many people does it take to eradicate all of us?
Um, well, we have, for ourselves, we have a contractor that we work with, um, nine to ten guys usually, it's a lot of work, very labor-intensive, especially when you're going up and down hills and trying to get large equipment up these dirt roads and
And do we ever try to recover the cost of these?
Absolutely, we can, under our search warrants, yes, or abatement warrants, rather.
It'll be a lien on the property?
Yes.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for staying with us this afternoon.
Michael?
Just a couple of points I'd like to make, can you go back to the pictures of all the grows, please? So the two grows on the upper right-hand side, uh, that the appellant denied being associated, I think they, she referred to them as the problem grows, uh, these had indications of fresh dirt being moved, uh, fresh grading, and there is no equipment up there, the only equipment was down below. As, uh, code enforcement mentioned, the vehicle was traveling down this road, which is a very steep road, uh, and, uh, I would akin this to a, a large shopping mall full of marijuana, and nobody went to this grow without going by here, nobody really, you could go to the other site, sorry, the other site, without going through the middle, um, but I, or any reasonable person would have a very difficult time believing that somebody in control of the center portion, the well, and the trailer and some of the stuff that was there, uh, would not be readily knowledgeable about everything else that was going on in that property, and not to a limited extent, I would say, quite, to, kind of extensively. The last thing I would like to address is the multiple parcel issue, uh, when trying to address deniability about, about a parcel, so if you were a grower that was trying to manipulate the system, you would expand and grow lots of plots of marijuana, far exceeding what you were allowed, and if you were caught and you started to disown those grows, you would still be left with your own grows, correct? But there's no, so, the point I would like to make is, uh, if somebody is obviously colluding and utilizing the same water source, the same equipment, the same drying tent, the same, uh, staff, uh, there, if you were looking at just denying one, uh, one grow and allowing to leave the others, um, there, there is no incentive for somebody to limit their grows to a, to a narrow area, because the only punishment that you're gonna get is a citation, clear it up, knock it down, and then I still have my regular, my regular grows. And that, that is a concern about the existing ordinance, it's a concern about a permanent ordinance, uh, code enforcement mentioned the other criminal, uh, the other criminal, uh, code violations, uh, that were found, uh, and the, the connectivity between all of the grows was without question. It's very difficult for us to convey that just by photos, but when you look at the trails, the travel path, the location, the totality of all the parcels and the grows, it was unequivocal to, to our investigators, uh, what was going on there, and that's why we proceeded in the manner that we did. So I, the, the last point, uh, I want to make is, uh, the, the grows that were up top, those, those were not new, they were not old, and they were not unknown to everybody else on the property, especially at the heart of the property where the well was, and the drying, and the deer poaching, and everything else.
So if I understand, what you're saying is, to save what you considered your registered grow, you could report the illegal grows when, if you thought things were kind of getting hot, is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, when you're, you're, you know, you're slapped on the wrist, okay, I'll knock those down, but I still have my other grows, and the poor mall analogy I meant, the middle of that grow that the appellant is in control of would be the mall management office, if you follow me, it's, it's unequivocal to think somebody is renting out all these other shops in the mall without them knowing about it, especially considering the waters being controlled there, the drying tent, the equipment, the sleeping quarters and what have you, there's no sleeping quarters up top, there was no, there's no place for anybody to sleep up top where the, quote, bad growers were.
And, the up-top grows?
Yes.
Was there evidence that it had been harvested?
No, it was still standing, it was still standing, but there was evidence of recent, very recent dirt being moved, so while
I'm concerned about is the, the, the buds or the branches that were
Oh, yes.
Being hung and dried.
They were coming from the top.
They were coming, so, so there was evidence that the, that that much of the harvest had happened up there, but even though there were still standing plants, and, and, um,
It was, yes.
I don't mean to be putting words in your mouth, but that's what I'm, I'm trying to get, is it your opinion that those, the materials that were being dried down at Mall Central, in your view?
Yes.
Were from up the hill?
Yes, it's my opinion that marijuana was being harvested from a variety of sites and brought down to a central location to be processed.
And, in getting, as I understand, you've got a, a search warrant that was separate from what code compliance had had?
Yes, it's
And to justify that to the court, which I assume you had to, um, what were the factors that you listed there to, to get the connectivity between the two, to justify the eradication of the, of the registered grow?
I do not have the search warrant in front of me, and I was not the affiant, but the, I know for a fact they utilized the well, the connectivity with the water going up, which I know has been addressed, the roads, the behavior of the individual coming off the hill, bailing out of the vehicle and running off, um, and I don't want to speak beyond that, because I know those are the only factors we discussed, but the, the search warrant, the client will go back to the office and write the totality of everything he or she saw, or what they're being fed by other investigators at the scene, so that is, I'm gonna limit it to that, because that's all I know of, because that's the only part of the conversation that I was part of.
That you were part of.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, at this point, if you don't have other questions, I'd like to just go to public comments, that's what we need to do. Is there anybody here that would like to comment on this appeal? Are you still Mr. Johnson?
After a big lunch, there's two of me, but, um, as you can tell, Freddie and I are fond of each other, he's, he's a good guy, and I, I like having him as a neighbor, so, there's an animosity, um, but, a little like the sheriff was saying, it's, it's really hard to believe that these were disconnected, um, Freddie knows that ranch like the back of his hand, and knows where every little site is, I remember when we were first talking about some of the illegal growers that were there, uh, that were up on the hill, indeed, there was a lot of people up, way up on the hill, that the sheriffs did, I remember seeing it, it's probably four years ago, where they chopped out thirty thousand plants, so it's a place where growers were, it's not, not uncommon, and we talked a lot about it, but he ran into some folks that were, um, some of the growers, and this is probably in early two, twenty fifteen, and he said, he chased them off and said, don't ever set foot in my land, so I can't, it's hard for me to believe that Freddie would leave them alone, and let, let things happen, you know, he's, he's the guy that runs his business today, and it, it just seems like it'd be connected. I, I don't want to do any harm to these guys financially, they're, they're nice neighbors, I like having them there, um, but it's become a problem, so.
It sounds as if there's a difference of opinion whether the creek is on your property or their property.
Yeah, and, basically what I did is, when Freddie did have a surveyor come in and do it, um, I photographed all the points, um, what we did is, we wanted to make sure that, uh, we understood where those were, because we had no idea, so he had his surveyor put all the stakes out, we took photographs of all of those, those stakes, so I know exactly where it is. When he built a fence, he did build it back from the property line, so, away from the creek, but the creek, according to the surveyor's stakes, was still on our side of the property, the bulk of the creek as we go down it, you know, just based on the surveyor's stakes, and the surveyors would mark it, when they, when they found an original pin, an original monument, they would say, you know, monument found, and when they did, they say, this is where they estimated it was, but no monument found, but I took pictures of all the stakes from the surveyor to make sure that we knew what was ours.
So the, the main tap, I think you called it
Right.
Was, was on your property?
Yes, yeah, that's this, we affectionately call it the turtle pond, because it's full of the pond turtles, you know, but, uh, that was where the, the couple of ponds right there, the big one, uh, came out of there, the second tap, it was this year, was way up the creek-a-way, but still on our place.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Is there any further public comment?
Colleen Platt, My Valley Springs and the Calverse Planning Coalition. I'll try to be quick, it's basically similar comments as the, as the previous appeal. We're equally dismayed by the effects, the environmental impacts, the lack of responsibility here. Both of these appeals have been out of, out of control, commercial cannabis grows, and they both, both the parcel 39 and 41, which are related, it was their same parcel, same applicant, they both demonstrate negligent and irresponsible management. The violations and the problems occurred on the applicant's watch and under their lease for all of the property and responsibility, which we believe are grounds for denial. The issues and violations are extensive, the lack of permits, multiple violations of code, camping, sanitation, new cultivation area was established, environmental damage, poaching of wildlife, illegal water diversions, grows interconnected with illegal growth, and the applicants had to be aware of all this. So we feel you have adequate grounds for denial and connection of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back. I didn't do rebuttal.
We haven't done rebuttal.
We need to do that. Paul, did you have anything further you want to say within two minutes?
No, I'll close, but, no.
Ethan?
Yeah, I just think it's pretty obvious that they controlled the upper grows, and I don't want to put words in Sabrina's mouth or quote-unquote last words, but I don't think there was ever a second where they thought that those grows were separate.
Okay. Would you, the appellant, like to come up and do any rebuttal, or?
I wonder what business hasn't had a responsibility ever occurred that wasn't fixable? How is it that, yes, these are heinous violations, they're horrible, and it happened on my watch? But I'm, I'm a tri, I'm a fixer. I like to fix things, I like to jump on it, I like to do as much as I can to show what kind of a person I am, and unfortunately, it should have been done previously. Yes, the trimmers, the trimmers brought in really did a number on me. The illegal site on the hill, which until the day I die, I will say that was never and will never be mine. I had no responsibility to it, I will say that. Water diversion, I would never for the environment that I love. I want to ask the sheriff's office, if this was a dwelling, let's say my square was a dwelling, there's a property line, an illegal grow site, and the person in the, in the dwelling felt threatened, would, would the, would the residents or the, the person who lived in the dwelling, would they be inclined to be a whistleblower for fear that retaliation would occur? I don't know. These are the questions that I have. For those, so as commissioners, I appreciate your time. Thank you so very much, and I hope that we can come, come across with a fair judgment. Thank you so much.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I think I recall from this morning, or early this afternoon, you're saying that you hadn't harvested your properties yet. Is that fair?
There were partials, because 39 was taken out where we planted, so we had dry space, we had dry, there were partials, we call it Christmas treeing, in some locations for, in certain items, enough to fill the line like it, like it showed.
Yeah, let, yeah, let me just ask the question straight out. Where, where did the stuff in the drying tent and the line come from?
39. Yes, sir, 39. And for Sabrina, where she stated the truck, you know, with it uncovered, could there be a possibility they waited to get to the down part of the hill and then cover it? I mean, you have to go at least two miles. For the quad, for the quad, that was actually Gandhi, I know him, and he came from the water tower. So, I mean, in terms of any colluding, the growers up top, they knew some of the people at the bottom, so they would have lunch together, but in terms of any colluding, I had nothing to do with that grow up top, nothing. But, anyway, I want to thank you for your time. Thank you.
I've got a question, ma'am. Did you, didn't you have a drying tent on 39, too?
This is correct, yes, sir.
Did you take plants that you were harvesting on 39 and put them in the drying tent on 39?
Yes, there, there were some there as well, yes, sir.
So, so why wouldn't you take all the plants that you were harvesting on 39 and put them in the drying tent on 39?
There was no room.
So you ran out of room?
Yes, I ran out of room.
So then you took them from 39 up to 41?
That's correct.
Okay.
But didn't we see pictures of the drying tent on 39 that also had food and this sort of thing in it?
When you have three grows with 66,000 square feet, there's a lot that you have to trim and cut and hang, trim, cut, hang, trim, cut, hang. And in terms of any location and where it would go, yes, you're limited for space. Now, whatever they did up top, I have no idea. I don't know what they did with their stuff. But, thank you so much for your time. I invite you to come to my location, inspect me.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to close the hearing, bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation. Anybody want to start?
Just make a couple of quick comments. The applicant continues with her claim that she's not responsible for these other sites. She admits to being the signator on a lease agreement for five years, not one year, but five years. And in that lease agreement, on page one, right at the very beginning, it uses the word "all," "all of the following parcels," and it lists 39, 41, and 42 with addresses. It specifies the rents, specifies a few other terms, and then under "three," "premises are leased to the tenant for uses normally incident thereto. Tenant shall not commit or permit others to commit waste or accumulate rubbish upon the premises. The tenant shall use the premises in compliance with all laws, statutes, ordinances, et cetera." So the claim that you're not responsible for somebody else on land that you have leased is totally wrong. It may not be the way you feel, but legally, I believe you're absolutely wrong. So, going to have to deny the, the application. I guess we're, are we combining them in some sense?
We're not combining them so much as we are adding additional evidence in 1795170A1 if we so choose. They typed it up during lunch?
Yeah, okay.
I, I think I understand correctly that at least three of the unregistered grows continued to be hers. Even if we assume that the ones on the hill were not hers and they were consistent with his testimony, they were other people, even though she may have had a legal right to stop them, that didn't happen. But at a minimum, there were three of the old sites that continued to be cultivated in addition to the three she applied for registration for. So to me, that is a, a separate violation, it's a violation of, of the urgency ordinance, because unless you're registered, you can't, you're prohibited from growing. And so it's a failure to comply with the requirements of the urgency ordinance as a separate basis for violation. And I, I do think that the resolution should reflect that. In terms of all the other evidence, I, I don't think there's any real contradiction to what the planning department and the sheriff's office have, have presented, that the violations are, they're there.
There is the, again, she said that the camping and the stuff happened under her watch. She did nothing about it. So it's total violation. The cleanup is, hasn't been done yet, and to me, that's a biggie. The deer is another issue. All happened under her watch, so this should definitely be denied.
What I said about the parcel we were dealing with earlier was, can be said again, and I won't go through that. But we could, it, it seems to me that there's so clear grounds for denial without involving the upper properties, I tend to agree that the sheriff made the right decision in linking those properties and convincing a judge that they were linked to justify the eradication. But if we have any doubt about the upper properties and their connection, we've got one denial here that is, I would think would be ironclad, and we could leave those three upper properties specifically referencing them out of our decision, and it would be just as strong. I just, I'm not, haven't decided if that's what I want to do yet or not.
Well, I just, adding the language with the, the other grows, they were done in 2016, they were not done in 2017, they were never inspected by code compliance or the sheriff's So when she says she was doing the other grows, it was during 2016, because she thought they were grandfathered. I don't know what adding them to the ordinance at this point would do for extra evidence, because we didn't validate it. The only reason we know that she was doing it is because she told us. So-
I think they're there in 2017.
I'm sorry?
These, these three unregistered grows continued to be grown on in 2017, not just 2016.
Okay, but, but the, I think the reason that the planning department, I think the sheriff's department and code compliance still has to validate where and whose they are. I mean, she's telling us they're not hers, and I understand what you're saying about the lease saying they are her, that is her property to manage and control. I think Kelly's talking about-
Different groups.
You're talking about some different ones.
I'm not talking about the one, I'm not talking about the ones on the hill.
He's talking about the ones with the push pins.
I'm talking about the ones that she had earlier. She abandoned several of them.
I thought she abandoned those in 2016, though.
Not all of them.
She abandoned the ones on the hill.
She abandoned the ones on-
And, and she abandoned some others, but there were three she did not abandon.
Oh, I thought she was down to just the three grows, it just gets confusing. Sorry.
No, and actually, actually, the resolution has this in it, but it's linked together with other stuff. The last page of the resolution, in paragraph six, the last phrase, where it says she continued to cultivate unregistered cultivation areas on the parcel without informing the planning department. Well, it's more than just not informing the planning department, it's a prohibition against cultivating. You can't do it, whether you tell the planning department or not. So yes, it's picked eye, but it's not, it's not identified as essentially the serious violation that it is, because it makes it sound like if you told the planning department, you could have six grows. That's not true, you could have three. That's my point.
Okay.
If I could clarify, I think, you know, funding number five was, like you say, combine both of those together, and maybe that if you feel uncomfortable in including this year's cultivation on the hill. If you look back at figure one, aerial taken August 20, 2016, there are five separate cultivation sites under her control that we were told were going to be consolidated. Now, she may have misunderstood that, but, you know, she should have at least come to the county to say, "Can I do this?" Her application said, "We're combining these," that meant that that was going to be combined that year. That was what she was registering for. Whereas, you know, at that point, the intent was we would have an ordinance adopted by, by next, by this year, and that, you know, so that was for 2016, that's what they registered for. And it clearly was not done in compliance with what her application was for, which was a single grow, the site four on, on this site. Instead, there are five separate cultivation sites that were existing in August of 2016. So if you feel like you don't want to consider this year's cultivation up on the hill, then I would say you could delete that second paragraph of the evidence finding. And then maybe add a sentence or two, we could add a sentence or two to the first paragraph that clarified that there were five separate cultivation sites in 2016 on this parcel. They were not consolidated as identified in the application.
So you would suggest deleting the second paragraph under the evidence of paragraph five? I would agree with that with, but for different reasons, but it doesn't matter, as long as we're not going to have it.
Yeah.
Okay. That, that's all my comments.
Okay. So I think what I, if, nobody else has any further comments, I think what I would like to do to clear up some confusion in here, Commissioner Wooster, if you have language you want to strike or add, can you please clarify to us right now what you're looking for?
Well, okay, on this resolution, yeah, let's clean up some things. On page two of four, paragraph four at the bottom, we have that same typo in the quotation from 17.95.17082, talking about violations that are occurring on the parcel within the county, it should be occurring on any parcel within the county.
And I believe that we're going to substitute that with the new language, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So everybody's good with that? That's a five poll, right? One, two, three, four, okay.
Yes.
Then on paragraph five, oh, there's just a typo here, the third sentence says, "County aerial imagery taken August 20, 2016 shows the registrant did not develop," should be "develop" in existing comp, and then I think we're striking the second paragraph under, under number five.
Oh, that's where the second paragraph is, okay.
And you missed the abandoned, right, in that same sentence? Mr. Wooster.
Ouch.
I gotta leave something for somebody else.
Don't start picking on each other.
I have to leave something for somebody else to do.
All right. Okay. All right, so we're all clear on that, and we all agree on that, is that correct? One, two, three, four, five, okay. So we are going to need to hear a recommendation, and what I would like to do is start with 601 and wrap that one up with adding the language that was submitted to us during lunchtime on the 1795170A.1, adding that into the resolution of 601.
Except that the ante got it in the wrong place on the correction. It's supposed to be any parcel, not any registrant on this. This correction, whoops, why are we looking at different pages? Oh, we second, second page.
Any parcel.
Boom.
Yeah. Does ante goes over there?
Okay. All right. So the only change are we going to make to 601 is to be adding this, and you're all good with that?
Well, I'm reading this, I'm not, I'm not sure that the, the poaching episode, it's found its way into the 601 denial, and I think it should.
I have a question, when it says "finding X."
Right.
Oh, I, I wasn't sure exactly which-
Which one?
Which, which finding, and, and we could also reference the-
The poaching would come under 1782, otherwise it should-
The poaching would come under 1782, otherwise it should state from the law.
Right. But it's not referred to in the evidence underneath there.
So we could add, as at four, in findings, I guess it's one and two rather than X. And in the findings for resolution number... And what was the second resolution for 602, for parcel 41?
Okay.
It looks good to me.
All right. Then I think we already read the recommendation on 601? No? Okay, let's start with reading the recommendation as amended on 601.
Very good. Recommendation for 601. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 2017-100, denying appeal 2016-601, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny application 2016-601 as amended.
Thank you.
Second half.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries on 601. Can you read Peter the appeal process? And then we'll go to 603.
Sorry. This appeal is... Or this action by the planning commission is final, and this appeal to the board of supervisors within 15 calendar days of today's date.
Okay, can you read the recommendation? And thank you. Can you read the recommendation on 603, please?
Yes. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 2017-101, denying appeal 2016-603, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny application 2016-603 as amended.
Okay, and you're all clear on the "as amended"?
Well, I'm not entirely clear on the deletion of the second paragraph, as I understand it.
On number five.
Second paragraph of the evidence under number five. I was thinking that that would have to do with the plots up the hill, but I don't see with that. I'm not sure what the elimination of the second paragraph does.
Well, here's the problem with that.
Thank you.
If I understand the record completely, she wound up moving the site she originally planned to grow on to the one that she eventually did grow on. She didn't increase the acreage at all. And she didn't do any grading to make that move because it was already... It had been a site earlier. But it wound up with diseased plants on it, and he had to abandon it earlier. And so all she did was she changed the location she planned on growing to a different one, which had been a previous grow site anyway and required no grading. And I think she was entitled to do that. So I wouldn't deny her application on that ground. That's why I was in favor of deleting the second paragraph of paragraph five.
Okay.
What she did do, which was not good, was continue to cultivate on more sites than she registered for.
And in that statement, are you talking about the ones on the hill?
No.
You're talking about the other three down the lane?
Right.
So...
And that's picked up in the last paragraph.
Is it anybody's understanding that the resolution covers or doesn't cover the stuff up on the hill?
It does not.
Does not. Does not. Because of the elimination of that second paragraph?
Yes, because the specific reference was to the... I'm sorry. The county aerial image taken January 1, 2017 was what we based our... That was the reference to the cultivation this year up on the hill.
Ah, okay. I see.
So otherwise, we're just referring to last year's August aerial imaging that shows the five cultivation sites on this parcel. And that's where they did not comply with their registration application.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So are we good with "as amended" on 603 recommendation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Likewise, this is also appealable to the board of supervisors in 15 calendar days.
Okay. Okay, so that is going to conclude the hearings for today. Is there any informational items? None? No study session? Any of the commissioners have any reports they'd like to give? No? Planning director has reports?
Just very briefly.
Okay.
We will be presenting three draft ordinances to the board of supervisors on Tuesday. A ban ordinance, your recommended regulatory ordinance, and the final version of the board's recommended ordinance that was presented to you previously. The board wanted to see that, so we have that available for them as well. So that will be going forward to the board on Tuesday. And we'll see what happens.
I... There's been a, I think, a misunderstanding amongst several of the staff, at least, that what we were presented with was the Tofanelli version. And what we were asked, and the staff was asked to do, was to consider what Supervisor Tofanelli had specified as his concerns and consider what we had done before in recommending to the board and come up with a solution. So I don't view what the staff presented to us as the supervisor's version because the supervisors asked us and the staff to consider both and come up with the right solution.
So what we're calling alternative two, the board alternative, is a combination of what the board had said they wanted you to review and consider and input that we got from the commission as well as subsequent input that we got from environmental management agency regarding certain mitigation measures and the sheriff's office regarding some of the language regarding security.
Labeling the second thing as the board version is, I think, inaccurate and misleading. I think that is the... It is what you presented to us, but you very clearly said, when there was a conflict between what Supervisor Tofanelli wanted and what we had recommended, ours was eclipsed, Tofanelli's was put in. And you were quite forthright about that.
Yes.
But that isn't what the board asked us to do.
And your recommendation is included in the panoply of alternatives that they will be looking at?
I understand that, but I think it should be labeled as... Your version two should be clearly labeled as where there was a conflict between what the commission said and Tofanelli wanted, why you went with Tofanelli. I mean, that was what you did. And that is not the board version.
Well, if we did that, then we have to go back to when the original one we did was the board directed us to come back with a ban. And that's... We didn't do that either.
No, all I'm saying is that labeling the... What the staff presented us was not consistent with what the motion before the board that passed three to two did. What we ended up presenting to the board is consistent with that motion. And I... To label it the board version is that we disregarded or we disobeyed somehow the board. We followed the board's direction in considering both what we had set up before and considering what had been presented at the board of supervisors meeting that day. And we came up with our best version possible.
So just so that we can have some clarity here, this is not an agendized item, so we won't be voting on what's going to change when it gets to the board of supervisors. We worked on a ban. They asked for it. They've got it before them today to look at on the 19th. We worked on a regulation because we chose to work on a regulation as a recommendation only. It did not go forward with board authority.
Sure.
Then we have the board authority, and that is why there's three going forward. If you feel there is any conflict here with how it's going forward, I would recommend that you go to the board of supervisors meeting and speak during public comment directly to the supervisors. There's nothing we can change here since it's not an agendized item.
I'm just asking the staff to reconsider how they're going to label this alternative two. I completely disagree that it's the board's version.
Well, the board has the authority, and they're the ones that give their ordinances.
They can do whatever they want.
We only make recommendations.
But this way, it looks as if we just... We disobeyed the board when we followed the board in every respect of the motion that was passed three to two.
We did not follow the board.
We did not because the board, in the very first time they came to us, they came to us wanting us to do a ban. Right, so but...
And once again...
So what I'm understanding what you're saying is the first time, it's okay to disobey them, but the second time, it's not?
I'd say all...
Okay, I'm going to end this right here.
Nothing wrong... No, just let me... I'll be quiet within 30 seconds.
Okay.
There's nothing wrong with presenting that version to the board. I think that might help clarify things. But to say it's the board version, I think, is inaccurate and misleading.
Well, it's just a question of what they call it.
Yes.
Call it the Tofanelli version. Call it pot light. Call it what you want.
Exactly. It's just that I fully agree. It just shouldn't be called the board version.
He doesn't like the label, so that's it. That's it.
Okay.
Slightly different topic than we said.
Okay, yes.
Are we still supposed to be getting our emails changed?
Yes.
Because I tried, and they said no. Have they fixed that? Are they ready for us?
I'm in conversation with Stan from the technology department. And he is about to work on trying to get people up and going on the new system. He understands. I communicated to him yesterday that because of the new system being put in place, I guess in the next week or two, that people wanted to wait instead of being trained on two systems. And I'm continuing to work with them on that, so...
So when he does that, make sure there's an app for us so we get notifications with emails because if we don't remember to go on and check it, we don't even know there's anything there. And if there's some urgent there that you need for us to read, we have no way of knowing, and I don't particularly check it every day. So, okay.
Finally, no meeting on the 28th.
Thank you.
I'm available that day, though.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, whatever.
Thank you all for coming today. We're going to adjourn the meeting.